Guys, we got 5:30. We're gonna stand for the pledge. Is it Marley? Marley Lucas is gonna lead us. Thank you.
Jenny Davis. Andrew Mayhew.
Yes.
Rose Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Yep.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Any additions or corrections to the agenda, commissioners?
I'd like to. I'd like to add something to the COA agendas.
Go ahead.
At the end of the meeting, if we could have a commissioner comment time. We allow the public a couple of times. We do, we do the commissioner reports on the regular meetings. We could just have a commissioner comment time or discussion time. I don't care what you wanna call it. Just a time that, if I got something on my mind, I can say something.
Maybe that should be before public comment.
Yeah, just maybe just before public comments.
That might say.
So like any discussion at H is what you're looking for? I guess I'm, I wanna make sure I'm understanding.
Number six.
They could make a new number six and call it commissioner comment.
So I guess I just, again, I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding.
Something on my mind.
Okay.
Commissioner soapbox, I don't care.
Because right now, we're asking, I don't, okay, like you want that on every agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
From the COA, for the COA committee and all meetings.
Okay. For the.
Because we already do commissioner reports on the regular meetings.
I see what you're saying.
Already on the agenda.
Yeah, I wasn't understanding. Okay. Public comment. Any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Look at. Go ahead.
Okay, so in, I'm in fifth grade. My name is Marla Lucas. I'm in fifth grade and for, in social studies, my dad like made, like made it and.
Makes you.
And so for the All American Award, you have to, there's multiple things you have to do and go into a local county meeting is one of them.
Welcome and thank you for coming. And if you have any questions as we go, just ask. Okay? Uh, any public comment on the phone? For appointments, we do not have any, correct?
Right.
Item five, discussion items, MCAG membership.
So a bit of a bouncing ball here on the dues that MCAG was asking for, but we ended up settling on, if we wanted to be full-fledged members of that group, the annual dues for Ogumaw County would be $2,100. I did provide in the material, a couple of things that was provided by MCAG, you know, particularly their current membership benefits that they talked about. And there was also a work program that they submitted, give you a better, a little better idea of what they do as a region. Now, we are part of this region whether we want to be or not. These regions, I think there are 12 of them across the state and those lines are pretty firm. There are, you know, obviously Northwest has theirs. You might have heard of a group called SEMCOG in the Detroit area and they do a lot of, a lot of federal pass-through monies and so on. This group, pretty much same, they're way into economic development and they are, I think gradually, getting more and more involved in housing, which was the, kind of the reason for reaching out to them in the first place when we were talking about those regional housing plans. I'm not as well-versed in how MCAG works. When I was up in the Traverse City area, then Northwest Regional Council of Governments up there was very active with the counties and was very helpful in providing assistance and particularly with things that are of scale that are slightly larger than a county. We were doing an awful lot of coastal zone management work up there. Obviously, we don't do that in Ogumaw County, but a lot of wetlands work and things of that nature. I do see definitely a benefit if we were to be a full-fledged member of planning and zoning, being able to access a lot of what they do and utilize their work. That being said, I couldn't tell you frankly, as I stand here, whether or not this is gonna be a worthwhile investment or not overall, because I don't know the organization that well. They, again, just based on what they've said, they are in a lot of the things that regions typically are. Most of these regional councils of government get their funding both at state, from state and federal levels. For instance, you may have heard of P-116. It's a farmland tax relief program that the regions typically are a clearinghouse for those. We've seen, I think, one or two of those that have come through here and they're, from our end, they're not all that intense. But we don't do anything with them other than to say yes, proceed. And it's actually that council of governments that does the legwork to make sure that people in agriculture get the credits that they have coming to them. But I'm sorry, I'm being a little bit more wishy-washy about this. I can't say with absolute confidence that this will be a great investment. But then again, you know, it's 2,100, it might be worth a year trying it out. I think probably it's true is that we will get out of it what we ask of it. So if we are members, maybe our departments will have more to ask of them and maybe can get more assistance than what they do now. Penny Baye from representing our EDC does go to their, what they call their red team meetings. Those are regional economic development meetings. They allow her to participate. I don't know that our participation or paying dues is gonna increase that at all, but at least we do have a voice in that economic development component. So it's up for discussion, I guess, as to whether you wanna proceed or.
Is there a deadline? We have to make up our mind.
There's no deadline.
Commissioner Simmons, what was that?
Is there a deadline? Well, we have to make up our mind. We research this a little bit as a group of commissioners. I'd like to look into it a little bit.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Tim, we're back in the lock. I'd say no.
Commissioner Wiltie.
Well, I asked him to look into this first because we're hitting some roadblocks with the housing when it comes to the grant opportunities and trying to get them written the proper way. Trying to get like a quarterback for us. So I know Penny was, you know, she's pretty close with this group and it seems like they could really help us with that. But I'd also like to maybe see if we could have Ryan here and ask him if this would be very beneficial to him.
Ryan Beeter?
Ryan Beeter, yeah. If that's the case, that could also be very beneficial to him. I think that would help me really make a decision and it gives me a little more time to talk with Penny some more and really feel comfortable that I feel like we could get something real beneficial out of it on the housing side.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, we're a member. We're not.
We're not a dues-paying member, but we are, whether bad or different, we're part of this region.
Okay.
Part of what's happening.
I get that. We haven't paid them any money ever?
I can't see ever, but it's been a real long time since we have.
And we don't have anybody's commissioner on this assigned to this?
We do have a liaison. Let me just go back here.
Oh, we did. Yeah, it could be me at first, weren't it?
Could be me. Probably is me.
But I'm surprised when I looked at the map, how far west it goes, although Eclair is about. I was just kinda picturing us being on the outer edge.
It's a large area.
In. It is. I just pictured more.
It's me.
Farther north.
Yeah.
So what's your thoughts on this, Commissioner Simmons?
I need to do more research on it before we become a full-fledged paying member. And I will do that.
Okay, I 100% believe you, so thank you.
If you'd like, I could invite their director in to talk to you. But you're going to really, at that point, get a sales pitch as much as anything.
Right.
But I think talking to Ryan definitely would be, I think, worth your while.
Well, Penny as well. I mean, she could come in.
I don't want to jump in and. Can you come into our next, see what we have to do?
Six or seven years ago, we quit MAC.
We did.
And we were the only one.
But we're short of money, again.
Right, right. And I'm looking at, I'm looking at some of these numbers here for the money and it's, I'm kinda, they're saying they're basing it on a population. There was so much of person and that was like 10 cents a person.
We're gathering.
Including babies?
Well, whatever the census is.
Okay.
And we got 20, 21, 21,000, 22,000 people in the county and that's, that's kinda how they're coming up with the number. But, you know, I'm looking, you know, Aaron Act 3,000. Isabella's up to seven. But Saginaw, it shows, and just by this, it shows Buena Vista Township is the only thing in Saginaw. Saginaw County's not listed here. And that would be a big, well, they're saying $5,000 down lower, it's $5,000 for Saginaw. And they got us at 35. I know that there was a discrepancy of how much. I don't know. And then I look at their project list and stuff and they got almost nothing this far north. Even the Ironbell Trail, it's supposed to dissect most of our county and it's not even listed. It cuts off at Aaron Act. Leaves out Iosco, leaves us out, you know.
So how about we get Penny in here and let Ryan come in here and.
Perfect.
Oh, yeah.
And I read.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
We'll put it on the next committee.
I don't wanna commit to anything, no.
Perfect.
Okay.
Procurement card limits.
Okay, this continuation of a conversation we had a couple of. I'll help you in just a second. A couple of meetings ago, two things that you have, first, that provided by the treasurer, you've got a list of which departments have procurement cards and what their limits currently are. And then copy the actual policy itself. The conversation was whether or not the 1,000 limit was sufficient. Should we increase that to 2,000? You did hear Jeff at the last meeting talking about, yeah, he acknowledges, had he not waited. As long as he did, he probably wouldn't have run up against the limit the way he did. But that being said, he also, it sounds like, didn't know whether or not his person could go until the last one. So, you know, those things happen. And generally, when they do happen, as we did with Jeff this last time, is that a couple of departments get together and say, okay, well, you've got enough to cover the hotel, this department can cover the airfare and we could get it covered on those situations. Not something that I would say is absolutely urgent, but increasing them make it more convenient for some departments? Yeah, probably. But you don't have a parade of departments coming in and you can see the ones who are still at 1,000. They're not coming in asking for more themselves. So this might be a one-off.
Comments, Commissioner Wiltie?
When I first started talking about this, I kinda was thinking, you know, let's, let's give everybody an increase because I know how close Karen looks at everything and, you know, Tim knows it. It's important that everybody's gotta be accountable for this. But more I talk about it here and tonight, I think we should just leave it the way it is.
Commissioner Scott.
Yeah. If an exception, if an exception comes up, contact the administrator, work it out with a couple of different cards if that's what it is. Is there a way to temporary waive a card for a week and then?
Well, you've done it with my card, pending my numbers coming in. But it was something that came to you and you said, yes, we'll do that.
I think the big thing is, is once we get everybody on board, what a budget is and how, how it works and everything else. And, and you, you know my idea of where they're spending the money, you know. But, yeah, I'd just leave it alone.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Leave it at the same.
Commissioner Simmons?
I'd leave it.
Because I guess I didn't realize, and I appreciate her putting this, this information on here, that Tim, the county administrator's limit is $4,000, correct?
Temporarily. Once Mike comes in and I just got a text from him, it'll be tomorrow to make his order. That goes back down to, I think it was 2,500.
That's, okay, so that's, yours is back down to 2,500.
Right.
I'm sorry, I missed that. I mean, so if there is an emergency, somebody and someone's car limit is 1,000 and they need something, you still can utilize your 2,500 and then bring it to us, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, yeah, I say leave it as is too. That's, that's, that's plenty there. And if we need to make an exception, we've made a very few in the past year. So.
Right.
Enough about that. You guys are good with that?
No.
Okay. Cyber liability insurance.
You have in the package, this is just the renewal, but it comes in, it's a few hundred dollars more than last year. Fact that this is a contract in excess of 5,000, you need to approve it. And obviously, contract needs to be signed by the board chair as well. The option that was recommended by our carrier was option number one. And it's total, it's about $110 difference between that and option two.
How much is it?
It's $11,153. And one of the reasons, just back for some history, a few years ago, friend of the court came in and they are on a system that's connected to the state. So when they're doing their work, it goes into the state servers for the courts. And because it comes through our network, part of the agreement was with the state that we would have cyber coverage just in case there was a breach. And this meets that requirement. Frankly, it's a good idea to have this anyway. I mean, there are breaches happening more and more every day. It would be good to have this in our back pocket if we need it. And they do work with Tom in testing our firewalls and things. So there's benefit that way too. It's not just something that's stagnant out there. But Tom was able to work with them and go through their testing and they've conversed back and forth, you know, talking about how to make our system stronger.
Tom, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I don't. I looked it over. I, I think it's okay.
Which option are you recommending?
The, I don't remember off the top of my head, I had to pull it up, but for the, I think it was like $110 difference. The difference was in the deductible, if I'm not mistaken. And it was, I think it would have been cheaper to pay the higher rate for the better deductible if we used a claim, because say we do have a claim, it would actually save us money if I understood it correctly, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it sure does. Has there been anything happen this past year?
No. No, fortunately, we have never had to use this and I pray we never do.
But like, there's been some healthcare. This is extremely important. There's been some healthcare issues lately.
Let me tell you. I'm surprised that you gave us two options because it's so close. It's a no-brainer. It's a no-brainer goal, $1,000. Well, you use a one-time, you're gonna, you're gonna do it times a difference.
Commissioner Wiltie? Commissioner Simmons?
Yep.
Commissioner Mayhew? Where, where does this come out of in our budget?
It's one of three places I'm picking up off the top of my head. There's a, we've got one section that talks about software.
Okay.
Insurance and we have contracts. I'll look to see where we paid it in the past and that's where it'll come from, but probably one of those three.
Okay. I agree, the option two is a little bit higher with the lower deductible. Designated assessor opt out?
This is an interesting saga that I've been going through with the attorneys and with equalization for a little over a week. We received a letter from Department of Treasury on behalf of the State Tax Commission saying that we need to appoint somebody to serve as a designated assessor. Two of you maybe remember in the past, we've opted not to do that. Randy did go around to the townships when this was first became law a few years ago, and there really wasn't any interest from the townships in contracting with the county to be that designated assessor. Now, what the state is saying, they want this person kind of on standby in case they come through and do their analysis of a township and decide this township needs to be reassessed or the whole tax rule looked at. They wanna have somebody in the wings to come in and do it. And if they do that, that municipality is responsible for the cost. Randy was less than warm to the idea of being that person to begin with. And when we first looked at this a few years ago, there was a provision in there that said we could opt out. But by opting out, we just simply didn't have to opt in. We didn't have to tell the state, we're going to do this. Well, the state told us this year, we want you to sign an inter-local agreement with us saying you're opting out. And I asked the attorney, this makes no sense. Why are we getting into an agreement that says we're not gonna do anything? Why don't we just not do anything? And he's gonna scratch, he said, because he said the State Tax Commission wrote this law and you have to do it. Oh, and then he said he looked down further, reading, reading deeper into the statute and not what the State Tax Commission gave us. There was another provision way down at the end of the statute that said, if you have opted out in the past and haven't signed an agreement, then you don't have to sign an agreement now. So my recommendation to you is, we leave it alone.
Hasn't, I asked, leaving it alone has not caused any issue thus far, correct?
No. And what happens by us not taking on this role, which frankly is a state function, in my humble opinion anyway. The State Tax Commission is then responsible for finding the designated assessor, assigning that person to the community in question and taking care of all the administration that goes with it. We are not involved. They have to do it.
Is there any benefit with us opting in?
No.
Okay.
We don't pay.
We don't. We, because we don't, we don't hire an assessor.
No, but I mean, if they, if we opt out and they put someone, I thought we had to pay.
The community where they sign it, so let's just use, I don't wanna name one of our townships. Let's just say Acme Township was in trouble. Acme Township pays for it, not the county.
Alright.
I was gonna say something that escaped me, but, right, I just don't see the benefit. And, oh, I just have this nagging feeling. If we do get into any kind of an inter-local agreement with the state and they were kind enough to provide us a template. To express to the attorney, I think we are setting ourselves up for something that's, will be a surprise later on. And I don't want us there. I think if we just remain silent on it as a county, meaning you take no action, I think that's the best position.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Yeah, it's just another example, the state trying to mandate on the county and the county has to pay for it. You know, I just say we stay where we're at and move forward.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, it was totally confusing. You're, you're letting me opt out of something and then you're gonna turn right around and appoint somebody. I mean, I don't give. You know, I had to read this thing back and forth a couple of different times. It's like, are you kidding me? I mean, opt out of it, but if you opt out of it, then I'm gonna send somebody over there.
That's the way I read it too.
Yeah. It's like, holy smokes, you're covering all your bases, aren't you?
And we have to pay.
Commissioner Simmons, so what do you, how, what's your stance on this?
I don't know, it's rather convoluted.
Yeah.
And the way Tim explained it is different than how I interpret it.
That last paragraph that says, since we haven't done it before, we don't have to do it again.
Well, it says that, then let's not do it.
Yeah. I think Randy was in here last year and he explained it pretty thoroughly. And that was his, his opinion on it, leave it alone. And I mean, he runs, this is his department. Commissioner Mayhew? I agree. Transit Director Position.
We had interviews last week with the Transit Committee with two candidates who were brought back for a second interview. I've handed out for you as a background, I'm recommended unanimously recommended choice, Sheila Schmidt. Sheila's currently an assistant director at Otsego County. She was very impressive with her background. She already knows BSNA and is already operating within a county government system. So already has that background working in her favor. I think as far as interviews go, I think she interviewed very well, both times that she was in. And what we'd like to do is bring this forward next Thursday by resolution that she be our next transit director.
She lives in Gaylord?
She lives in Grayling.
Oh, that's a close system, I'm sorry.
Works in Gaylord.
Okay. So that's not too far, but I was just thinking, is this a full-time, five-days-a-week position?
Right, so the way we've mapped this out is, once a new director is hired, Ray's agreed to stay on for, you know, 30, 60, 90 days to help with the transition. And then Ray will probably transition to a part-time dispatcher type driver, whatever we wanted to do. But he's ready to step down as director. And here is somebody that's come through the ranks up at Otsego County from a, gosh, when she called herself a bus aide or a driver's aide, to be a driver, to getting into the managing position that she's in right now. So it's really gone through all those steps and I think has an appreciation for everything we're doing as well. But definitely a very impressive interview, I thought.
Commissioner Wiltie, you're on the board, do you wanna take over?
She actually still holds her CDL too. Yes, I thought that was impressive. No, we, we were very impressed with her. We had another interview for the second, two rounds of interviews. And they, they both did really well, but I just feel hands down that she, she was the one to choose. And, you know, with her vast array of different experience up there in Gaylord with her transit, I really think that she's gonna bring a lot to the table. And I think it's gonna be a real good transition over. I'm looking forward to meeting her and getting her going out there, hoping to assist her.
Commissioner Simmons, you are also on the board, glad?
Yeah, I agree. I think she'll do a good job. She's had a lot of experience right from the ground up. So it's not as though she doesn't know what driving's all about and what's all the other jobs are about. So I agree. I think she'd be a good fit.
She agrees to the terms? Or we just, we have to?
She has. I talked to her since we've had the interview and, yeah, she's actually very excited at the prospects, but also recognizes that everything's pending this board's action before she, you know, makes that final announcement where she is right now. I was able to review with her the, the pay scale that we adopted, what the benefits looked like and so on. So she's got a very good idea, I think, at least what the compensation package is and what the expectations are with the hours of transit. So, you know, I think all those bases are covered. I've already begun the background check process. She does need to provide me a couple of other references. But between now and next Thursday, should be no problem getting all that done too. And I will invite her to the meeting next week, so if she's available, then we're gonna meet her.
Commissioner Scott, did you have something?
Well, I'm fine with taking the, taking the committee members' recommendations. And I'm glad to see the way that it was handled and the interview process and application process, interview process, everything else. I, I thought it went very well.
Okay, anything else? Commissioner Mayhew, any?
No.
Jail Village. I'm gonna put this on the next.
Yeah.
Phase four, okay.
Everybody, I think, said.
Me and a regular committee. Okay, good.
Okay, I have the material that we've had for the last couple of meetings pertaining to potential jail millage. And what points your attention to the millage rate table, that was expanded, just for quick reference. There was conversation about millage numbers. So you've got now numbers ranging from half a mil, not even that, five tenths of, five hundreds of a mil, all the way up to three mils. So you've got all the numbers there to talk about in terms of what a millage would bring. And of course, the statistics that, that have been provided. So you see the revenue and expenditure trends all the way through our current budget year. And then the graph trends with a couple of statements in there about what those trends are doing. So the question was, did you want to move forward with this? And if so, is it August, is it November, if at all?
Commissioners, Commissioner Wiltie?
It's been on my mind a lot the last three weeks. And I just, I'm really concerned with the fact of, you know, we know the, the current economic climate. We know where a lot of our constituents, you know, are financially hurting with the way things have changed so negatively in the last few years. Then on top of everything, everybody's been hearing about millages for months. I mean, it's been a big topic for five, six months. You know, we're gonna have so many millages in May, then we're gonna have so many in, in August. And we're really concerned about voter exhaustion. And now here, like in the last minute, all of a sudden, we're gonna throw this on for the August millage, where most people are gonna be completely blindsided. And I really think that the people that we do have supporting us right now, even if they don't say, for example, even support the Headley, that they still support the county, our services. I think if we try to throw this on, I think in August, they're just gonna totally switch tables and, and just, just vote no. So I just don't really think it's a smart move.
So you wanna take it off the table totally?
I entertain possibly for November, but I do not feel it's a good move for August.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, this is not, August is not the time. We can, we can take a look at this. We have more time. I'm not saying commit to, to November. What I'm saying, the deadline for November is into August. That gives us more time to, to really take a look at this and decide what we wanna do. I think we're just jumping into it too fast. And I said before, it's not just the millages that are on the August question. And I said before, it's not just the millages that are on the August question. It's all the candidate, candidates that are on. Uh whether it's township, county, state, federal, everything. There's a lot of stuff on August already. A lot of those races, even though those people will be on November's ballot, but a lot of those races will get decided in in August. You know, so.
So your answer is no to August?
No, no to August.
Commissioner Mayhew?
They asked the public to put the millage to build a jail. And I think we should go to the people to close it.
Uh no.
Hang on. There was a, they wasn't, yeah, that is a fact. Um so I guess the the question to you is, do you wanna add it? Are you saying yes to August? The question right now is, as far as is putting it on as a millage in August.
I guess if we're gonna put it on in November, that ain't gonna hurt.
So are you saying it's okay to bypass August?
Gives them more time.
Commissioner Simmons?
Uh November's not gonna help us either because the new FY starts November first. So it's on the November ballot, we're already a month into, you know, be a month into the uh the new FY, so I say no, don't put it on at all. Because November first is meaningless. Because the new FY starts, or do we, are we just gonna carry, carry, carry the expenses over until maybe it passes and what do we do if it doesn't pass it, especially if the Headley doesn't pass? I I don't want, I don't want, I don't wanna I don't make the line deeper. Then it doesn't pass, that's exactly what we'd be doing if we, if we put it on in November. That will be a black hole, no return as far as I'm concerned.
So the question is right now, do you wanna on it August?
I don't want it on at all.
Okay, so I think there's a unanimous not to put it on in August. Um I I again, I think we all also know our financial uh deficit as far as at the county level. Um I think it's gonna be up to the voters whether or not they want to continue to support the jail. Um I don't disagree with the statements that were made. There are a lot of very important uh millages on in August. Um we talked about them last night at one of my meetings. Uh and I hate for this to hurt one of those like veterans, like Commission on Aging Transit. Uh but I I also think that uh voters, it it needs to be up to the voters, uh the destiny of of the jail. Um and I also don't disagree with what Commissioner Simmons is saying. If we wait and put it on in November, it's gonna put us in further deficit. So it's kind of a
Lose lose situation.
Hundred percent a lose lose situation. I personally would like to hear from the sheriff and undersheriff on their opinion of this, if they don't mind coming up. Do you guys have an opinion?
Well, our our opinion, and we agree uh together, we think we should wait until November.
Tim, do you have an opinion? You are county administrator?
I do, but I follow your lead. Um and I absolutely agree with what's been said here. I think if it goes in August, you jeopardize the other millages, I really do. Um this does give us some time to really contemplate because as you know, Commissioner Simmons was saying, okay, November's, we're already into the fiscal year. Well, it would give us an opportunity to plan. If you really wanted to go November, we could come up with two scenarios. If it passes in November, this is what the budget will look like. And you wouldn't do an amendment in November to reflect that. If it did not pass, that maybe puts us down a different trail. Now, yes, that does commit us to at least sixty, if not ninety, days of expenditures at our current rate. But we factor that in and we balance our budgets based on that, on on two options. Uh not out of the scenario, at least then by the time August rolls around or at least this activity, we'll have a really good idea of what those cost scenarios look like because we'll have done the work. And then you can make a decision in August whether or not putting another millage out there is something that you feel is viable. But you'll have that foundation to work from. You'll know what the future will look like in either scenario.
Comment.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, uh fiscal year is October one.
I know.
Even if it gets voted in, the money doesn't come the next day.
Right.
So you're, you, I don't know that we'll even get it on December tax bill.
You would.
You could.
But if it, yeah.
But then again, we could, we could protect it out, even collect on the next year. So that, you know, you wouldn't have to, it it doesn't have to happen au- automatically. It does, it doesn't all fall, doesn't all happen December twelfth or November twelfth, everything happened.
Tim, go ahead.
Yeah, it um, we had this happen with uh one of the local millages. Uh we passed the budget and part of that budget resolution includes all the different millages. And you set those rates. Election happens in November. I remember Randy coming in here, he's got the official forms that he files with Lansing. You can amend that to include a millage for a jail. Uh if if that were on there, I forget exactly what the millage was the past last time. Uh but it required that amendment. It's it's a process that we're already familiar with, so that's that's simple. The question comes down to, you know, which which direction do we really wanna go? And if we don't wanna go this route at all, again, fine, we will proceed uh with that one scenario. But my point is, you've got some time to think about this.
The only other thing out there is, is our idea out there is, is if we don't put this on in August, um then we are down to one option in November. Um we wait till November.
Yeah.
Uh there's, there's gonna be, as we all know, unspokenly right now, there's gonna be one trail or another, and if if we put a millage on there in November and it doesn't pass. Um I think we know which direction. There's, there's no, there's no future date where we can ask again. Commissioner Simmons?
My understanding was the Headley is, if it doesn't pass, it would pretty much make our decision at that point. Cause the Headley doesn't pass. It looks like the Titanic to me. Without any question.
Tim, I guess i- i- I know you said, well, I'm gonna go back to you for a minute. I'm gonna put you out there because you're, you're, you do our budget. Um I guess you just said, yeah, I don't disagree with you. You're gonna follow what the the board's recommendations are, but again, I'm gonna ask you, if you don't mind stating your professional opinion, would you?
If you're going to do a millage, I agree with what's been said here. I think it would be um perilous, to say the least, to put it on in August. We've already got some questions that are out there. This is just gonna add to the stack and I completely forgotten until Commissioner Scott mentioned, the August election isn't just about millages. Yeah, there are people running for office. I mean, it's gonna be a big ballot anyway. Waiting right now until November, it looks like uh at least from where we sit today, this might be the only thing that would be out there. So that would be the only thing that we're asking people to consider. No matter what, it's a big ask. I think you're probably looking at, if you're gonna do this, you're looking at a minute, mill uh minimum of one mil to make any difference. That's a big ask. If you're gonna ask two and a half mils, well, two counties tried that in February and we're nowhere near close to passing. Um so, you know, I think there's definitely a threshold here where where it's just too much, you know, to ask. So to to get to answer your question, I think it would be a mistake to put it on in August. And I would kind of reserve right now and uh my opinion about November. I'd really like to get the two scenarios developed to see just how realistic they are. And Commissioner Simmons makes a good point. If uh Headley uh is not approved next week, I mean, that's also gonna paint a very real picture for us in terms of what our direction is.
Okay, I think it's unanimous to wait till November. Uh gee, OIP overtime compensatory timer park.
Okay, these uh are probably familiar to you now. Uh looking at them, I start on the first page because this is the one that's tied directly to the budget. And fifty-eight percent of the year, uh all five, well, four, I'm sorry, five of the six uh activities are within that range of where we'd expect them to be. But we saw a spike with corrections this time. And they're at sixty-seven point three percent of their budget. Uh we did talk about this a little bit at the Law Enforcement Committee meeting preceding this meeting. Uh we know the Sheriff's Office and the Jail Lieutenant are aware of this and are um obviously monitoring it. Going through the graphs, uh of course, that second table, you can see the outstanding amounts of uh compensatory time that are sitting out there and the dollar amounts tied to them. Uh looking at the graphs, though, going down to the uh jail uh one, which is the on page uh six of eight, you can see our red line has already surpassed uh what we've had now for the last three years that we've been tracking this. Keeping in mind that we are adding the compensatory time value uh to this, these charts now, so that is playing a role in this, but uh the the point is there. It's the the overtime is uh higher right now than what we would like to see. Now, the challenge to the department is uh how do you control the budget for that? Uh you look at your other uh activities, your other costs, are there areas where you would move funding up to cover overtime costs? If you think they're going to go over, now's the time to be thinking about that. If they need an amendment from the board, they should bring it. They shouldn't wait for the third quarter adjustments and for me to go through these exercises. If they think it's gonna be higher, bring that issue to the board now for conversation. Uh first place we go, though, is to look where other activities are, other lines are in that budget. Is there money that we can move to keep that bottom line uh stable? So those are things that budget administrators do, and so that's what I would expect to have happen. Um there may come a point in a couple of months where this is getting to a a level that's really not acceptable. Um we we then have serious conversations about what we do next to keep those costs under control.
What, is there a reasoning the overtime is, was?
There were, we we asked that this afternoon at the other meeting. Uh there were a number of uh other vacations and scheduled times off that occurred. There was uh some injuries that had happened that uh were causing some of that overtime. Uh I think it's all legitimate. Uh looking at the comments in the uh no time system, maybe there's nothing that stands out that's uh was some obscure reason that doesn't make sense. I mean, everything is there, it's just a matter of now balancing vacations and those other times off. Hopefully, particularly if we had a lot of injury in there that was impacting people's ability to work, that those injuries will heal, we'll be back on track within, you know, thirty days, time will tell.
You guys were at the Law Enforcement Committee, can you give one before this? Do you have anything to add to this?
Um Tim pretty much hit it. The, that was the explanation from Tom, why the, some of the overtime costs were up, so.
Commissioner Scott, do you, you're part of that as well, correct?
Yeah, I, I really agree with it.
Anything to add to this, guys? Commissioner Simmons?
I don't want a millage. I think it's a sinking ship.
Anything to the report on what Tim gave us?
No, it still looks like a sinking ship.
Right, it does look bad. Commissioner Mayhew?
I don't want to tell you.
Overtime. Cost.
I don't know what to tell you.
H, any discussion? Commissioner Scott, do you have anything?
A couple of little things, just statement made last meeting that we didn't have any money. So we got money, we got eleven million dollars a year money. It's just that we spend twelve million. And we overspend. That's, that's our problem in this county, we overspend it. And and we're robbing Peter to pay Paul to to do that. And um I I hear people tell me, oh, I I hear a lot of money, I know, a lot of money, we're just spending. I mean, it's just, just like at home, when you overspend, you say, well, we're not gonna go out to dinner a couple of times this month, or something like that, where we don't go to the movies or, well, when I was a kid, he went to the movies, I don't know, but uh, uh you know, I and then I look at some of the finances going on with some of this stuff. Now, one of the things we did talk about at at Law Enforcement was how to generate more money into the, into the jail budget. They have been, they have been charging for room and board since February one. If we can collect that, that we can make a significant difference. That's collecting that money. Right now, the percentages are low, but we just started off. That could, that could be a big, big help, you know? And we're only scraping the top of the iceberg because we're allowed by the state to go up to sixty dollars per day, and we're only at twenty. So um you know, and this is, this is happening. We were, we have an article uh from the Grand Travis paper talking about the the uh six jails in the state that are closed. State uh six county jails that are closed. And they're shipping their inmates out, and it's costing less. You know? So it's a trend that's happening. We're not, we're not out in uh out in the wilderness by ourselves. It's tightening up, tightening the belts and stuff like that, but the the big thing with county, county government is we got statutory requirements. We have to have certain offices and people in those offices to do the certain jobs. Not easy. That's all I.
Commissioner Wilson?
No, I'm all set.
Commissioner Simmons, anything, anything?
I just look at what's, what the trend's been, where it's been going, and when people say, I think it could be this, or I think it could be that, you know, in my mind, thinking is not knowing. I have to know, and I'm not willing to sacrifice this county on somebody or anybody. And I think I wanted to know. And what I know right now is we're going broke.
Commissioner Mayhew? Any public comment? Any questions, young lady? Any public comment back there? Any public comment on the phone? Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna welcome Amy. I'm so sorry. I'm gonna second that, yeah. Uh welcome Amy to the team. She's new at the clerk's office, so any, anything to add? First week?
Yes.
Is it going well? Is it going well? Okay, so we are adjourned. I apologize for that. Six sixteen.